Hey, well, good afternoon. Today is March 17th, 2025. This is our 6 o'clock PM Rowan County Commission meeting. We're glad that you're here. Good to see you guys. Welcome. We hope you enjoy your time with us today. We'll begin our session as we typically do. We're going to have pledge of allegiance, also going to have our chaplain. Chaplain Taylor come forward. He's going to offer up what's called a solemnizing prayer. Always define what that is. That solemnizing prayer is a prayer for the commissioners. It's to get us in a frame of mind. We pray for wisdom to make good decisions as we make decisions on the behalf of folks of Rowan County. So commissioners, chaplain, if you'll come forward, we'll get started. Thank you.
Commissioners, let's pray. Lord, we're blessed to be here today, Lord. We thank for our county commissioners, Lord. We thank for the time they put in for this meeting today and all the work they do. Thank for the dedication they have for Rowan County, Lord. Actually, give them the wisdom they need for this meeting tonight and the days ahead. Bless them tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, never to be adjusted at all. Thank you, Chaplain Taylor, as always. We appreciate you. All right, commissioners, I have a few additions to the agenda. We're adding on the consent item W, AMD Construction Change Order. Also, you've been provided with some additional documentation for item F, which is the service agreement for Tech 84. And then we'll also be adding, all added as item 3D, right before adjournment, closed session, will, which will be to consider approval of the minutes and also attorney-client privilege item. Any other additions or deletions? All right, motion to accept those additions?
Oh, move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Oh, move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, we have public comment? All right, first, we have Mike Pope. Oh, that's okay. Yeah, Grace, yeah, come on, welcome. Glad you're here. Yeah.
Okay. Hello, commissioners. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Grace, and I'm a member of Down Home, North Carolina, a local community organizing group that works to win improvements in our communities by proposing well-researched and supported solutions to deeply and widely felt issues. The deeply and widely felt issue that Rowan County is struggling with is that of widespread youth disengagement and the resulting negative outcomes arising from that: youth drug use, misconduct, violence, unwanted pregnancy, and mental health challenges. Failing to address this issue leads to downstream concerns, concerns that are expensive to treat. For instance, holding youth in juvenile detention facilities. Instead of waiting until the treatment stage of dealing with a problem, we are here to ask you to please invest in early prevention. What we know is that prevention is key in reducing long-term suffering. Preventing the opioid crisis would have been much more cost-effective and humane than what we are left to do now, figure out how to deal with the destruction left in its wake. But now, due to the harm caused to our communities, each community across the state is receiving millions of dollars each year called opioid settlement funds that are meant to help remediate the harms that have been caused. When Rowan citizens were asked what the money should be used for, they emphasized root cause solutions. They wanted to see the money invested into recovery housing and programs for the youth. These initiatives help prevent and reduce negative outcomes. This saves tax dollars in the long run. Tonight, I am here to ask you to please invest opioid settlement funds using strategy A-6 into early prevention for our youth. We ask you to implement a coalition-based, evidence-based model that will address the need for collaboration that we have heard from stakeholders all across the community in Rowan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Mike now? Okay. Mike, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Hello, commissioners and those listening in the audience. My name is Michael Pope, and I am also here to advocate for the investment of $500,000 of the opioid settlement funds into creating a youth action agency using a coalition-based and evidence-based model to prevent and reduce youth delinquency, drug use, violence, early pregnancy, and mental health struggles that our youth are suffering from on a daily basis. These dollars would be used for a full-time coordinator for the coalition and youth stipend for a potential part-time youth position as well, an outreach and engagement budget, and other additional costs needed to sustain the program. When your community was asked why they wanted this in Rowan County, they said it was because it would be a community where greater opportunities for older kids beyond just school, opportunities for younger kids to get out and have a chance to do something that could help build them up as youth, give them greater engagement, not only in after-school programs but also in education for themselves and hopefully in school programs. Youth becoming positive role models within, with the strong community ties, more financial literacy for youth with potential for programs, as well as numerous ways to be financially independent and prosperous in their future. This is about outcomes for, positive outcomes for youth in the future and a sustainable model that can perpetuate that forward into the future for our youth all across the county. Thank you for your attention, and again, we are here to advocate for the investment of opioid settlement funds in early prevention using this evidence-based, coalition-based model to allow us to all to collaborate for Rowan youth. Thank you.
Mike, thank you. Daquan Coleman? Daquan, welcome.
Hey, how you doing?
Good.
Um, as far as gentlemen say here, my name is Daquan Coleman. I'm coming here, Rowan County citizen and county commissioners, also to advocate for $500,000, $500,000 in order to open a youth action agency using coalition-based, evidence-based model to prevent and reduce youth delinquency and mental health issues. These dollars will be used to employ a full-time coordinator for the coalition, youth stipends, and outreach and engagement budget, and other extra costs and needs to sustain the program. And off script, me personally, the reason why I know this is necessary is because the item mine is a devil's workshop. So if you provide the youth with the tools so they can take control of their own future, then you will see a change inside the future. You know, too often, we say that the times are getting bad and things are, things are seeming to be reverting and things seem to be crazy and all hectic, but if we don't invest into that, if we don't put our hope and, and our, let's see, I'm trying to think of the right word, our hope, but also our, our hearts and the youth, then, I mean, who are we to sit back and complain when they go by the wayside? So the only thing we're asking for is that the county provide an umbrella for all these different organizations that's already in the county doing the work, to be structured and create a system that we can funnel these youths through that is based on not only their experiences that we can document through social work and being able to show that this system is working, but also to bring the people together that are already doing the good work and put them under one rule so that we're not on the stilettos and we can now do some fellowship in order to, in order to collectively solve the problem that we have among our youth and the disconnect between the older and the younger generation. Y'all guys have a lot of wisdom. Our guys have a lot of know-how, but the youth, they have a lot of energy. They have visions and ambitions. So we have to do, we have to do what we can to provide the right environment to help them produce that vision, that dream that can hopefully help us in the future. Um, so that's what I'm asking for, that's what Down Home is asking for. We're asking for that you invest some of the opioid funds in order to create this coalition in the community and make a change, help the people, help, help the people help themselves. Thank you for your time, county commissioner. Thank you for your time, Rowan County.
Thanks for being here. Greg Joseph? Okay. Brandy Berg? Hi, Brandy, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Hi. So hello, commissioners and those listening in Rowan County. My name is actually Brandy Gardner-Berg, and my family has been part of this community for over 130 years. I'm here to advocate as well for y'all to invest $500,000 of the opioid settlement funds into creating a youth action agency using a coalition-based, evidence-based model to prevent and reduce youth delinquency. The drug use, violence, pregnancy, mental health struggles, all these things that are impacting our students, we can collectively come together and find a way to prevent it. Research has shown that there are programs like Communities That Care Plus and Prosper that do work together with a coalition model. They are approved by the Surgeon General's list, so they would qualify for the opioid funds. We would be more than happy to bring some more information about the programs that we have been coming across, because I would like to see less families that are losing parents and children, you know, because it impacts people at every level, whether it's the child who saw their grandfather overdose or the woman who had to take her husband off life support. This is impacting way too many of us. Our county should have never been in like the top 10 for receiving funds in this state. And if we start at the beginning with the children and try to prevent this to start with, we ought to be able to correct it. Now, I do very much want to say that we, we have spoken with people in the community and, and other people, not just me, want these same things. They want to see the community come together and work together to solve this problem for our children. They want, they want better than what we currently have in our community. I do want to say thank you for your attention, and again, we are here to advocate for the investment of opioid settlement funds in early prevention using an evidence-based, coalition-based model to allow for us to all collab for Rowan youth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brandy. Elijah Lawson? All right. See that we have any others? We'll move on to our next item. Let's see. Ma'am, you're up. You've been here a lot lately.
Easter fan. Good afternoon. I'm here today for a road naming hearing. We had a request from the Beckham family. They own this property in the 400 block off of Mount Hope Church Road near the interstate, and he divided that up and for his two sisters. And since that would make four addresses on the road, we requested that they name it. They have asked for Beckham Road, which was approved by 911 and EMS, and that's what we're asking today at the public hearing.
All right, that's easy. Any questions? All right, then we will open the Florida Public Hearing if anyone wants to speak on this road name change. This would be the time. All right, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve Beckham Road?
Oh, move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thanks for being here. Mr. Shane, this is for ZO1-25. Welcome. Good to see you. Been a while.
Good evening. All right, so the request before board this evening is from the Vogel Firm, or the applicant, for a property owned by Matt Benhaman Properties LLC. Subject site's located at 1375 Deal Road, and the request would be to rezone the property from RA, Rural Agricultural, to NB, Neighborhood Business. Site's located on the screen here, it's on the eastern side of Deal Road between Enigville Road and Enigville School Road. There's a photo from a little over a year ago that shows the subject site, so it's about five and a third acres, and probably difference in what's current from this photo. This manufactured home's been removed, and they do have some tree clearing that's occurred, but the rest of the improvements, you have a single-family home up front. This is the business for MBE cylinder heads and also a storage building in the back. So going back to this structure here, in 1988, the property was owned but, or operated out of Robert Racing Engines, which predated zoning in 88. In 2000, that building burned and a permit was issued to replace it. Of course, in 2000, we did have countywide zoning then, but that permit was issued as a replacement. For this request here, it will do two things. One, for the property owner, it will allow them to have a conforming use, no longer non-conforming. Pretty much the same type business. They built race engines before, and this is cylinder heads and intake manifolds. The other thing, too, it will allow an expansion to occur, and they do have plans for expansions at the site. All right, quick tour of the location. In the upper left, you see the brick home at 1377, and next, in the top right, just behind the house is the business at 1375. Between, I believe, right before Mr. Benhaman purchased the property, a thousand-square-foot addition was added, so it's a 5,000-square-foot building currently. And again, all the operation occurs out of that. Behind the building is a barn, just for personal storage unrelated to the business, and then off the back of the barn, in the rear, the section of trees that were removed. This would be an area they could expand. But again, this is a straight rezoning, that's all for it as context of why they're asking for the change. Quick tour of the inside. I don't have a great picture of it, but just think about a big aluminum cube, or I guess it'd be more of a brick rectangle. So in their operations, they'll take a large aluminum brick, put it in their CNC machine, and based on the input from a CAD design for their customer, will machine that down, that cylinder head intake manifold to specific specifications for the racing engine. They have a domestic and international customer base that they have custom spec'd out cylinder heads and intake manifolds. See below here, there's some product. Here's one added to an old engine block. The plan would be for expansion on-site, also have a lot more room for moving some equipment that's not on-site, but they do have, they'd like to operate there. Plan would be to keep this in operation, too, and have the expansion. First thing with any rezoning request, you look at the current district, what it permits, and the, so anything in that RA listing that says permitted with SR, SR being special requirement. In this district, you can have a rural home occupation. We'll talk about that next, but anything listed there is going to be, I think, home-based business. To the right, neighborhood business, in a hierarchy of what you can do is the next zone outside of a home occupation before a larger CBI or industrial-type classification. So it pairs very nicely with the RA, RHO standard. And on the top, the current zone, the two standards that it really doesn't meet, one, Mr. Benhaman doesn't live there. There's a house on the property, so to someone passing by the site, you'll see a home and a business, so it may look like it functions as a home occupation. Second, the maximum building size is 12,000 for home occupation. So with that, current operation, 5,000, it wouldn't permit, but 7,000 more. It does meet all the other RHO standards. As you transition to the NB district, this is just some math for what the district would allow, and it allows about 12,000 more. All the other standards in NB would be met. Those are the two key differences between home occupation and neighborhood business. When we look at the surrounding zoning, the areas in yellow are RA. You do have this green, which is a manufactured home park, an eight-unit park, and then about a half-mile down at Smith and Deal Road is Beaver's Village, Zone Industrial. When you look at the surrounding pictometry image, there's one house adjacent to the site, and then probably at about an 800-foot buffer, there's no other dwellings around it. And these are all in the present use value for farming. Look at the land use plan. It's in Area 3, and more specifically, it's on a minor thoroughfare, which the plan does encourage neighborhood business for a zone change here. Watershed, we are in the watershed, too. They're not asking for any SNI or density averages. They'll meet the low-density standard. From a public notice perspective at the planning board, we did have one person call. They were only curious, weren't opposed to it. Nobody attended the planning board meeting. Planning board voted unanimously, recommend approval for NB. I did take the liberty to modify some of these statements for their reasonableness and consistency, because it started out as a CBI/CD request until we realized that it actually does meet NB. Planning board did want to follow the land use plan recommendations and have it as NB. So any of these strike-throughs and changes are only to make it generic and not specific to a fight. So that's in your packet, but has these modifications here. So we would need a motion for the statement and then a motion to consider the replacement. Any questions?
All right, is the applicant here?
They are.
Anything to add? You're welcome to speak.
Everybody, um, yeah, we're, we're, um, we can do as much as we can with the, with the space that we have now. We can look at what we do in gross. That's all we're going to get out of that building. That's it. So we have machines that we've already purchased that are in storage, which would help expand that, and that's what the new building is for. And that's what we have a big opportunity. What happens in our, in our business is that investment companies have been purchasing a lot of the companies, and then they run them into the ground, and there's all kinds of, you know, if you can look at it as horrible, or you can look at it as opportunity, we see it as opportunity. So I think we can grow as, I think we, we can use all that space up very quickly, is what I'm saying, and create a good product and everything. I do want to mention, we do not build engines there, and we will never build engines there. We are just manufacturing there. So we'll never dyno or anything like that, nothing like that.
What kind of race, what kind of race engines are these for?
Um, so we do everything from, we do a lot of work in Australia and then, and then throughout Europe. When we first started, the cup deal was real big back then in the, in the 2000 and stuff like that, but since then, you know, that went, went, went away. But, so we do everything from World of Outlaw Racing to truck and tractor pull. We designed the cylinder heads and intake manifolds for, all the drag racing, the top fuel cars that go 330, we do all of that. Cover it very well with that also. Yeah, we have a really good group of people.
How many current employees do you have, and how many do you expect if you are allowed to expand there?
Um, we're at seven, but truly, we just need to put machines in. That's where we're struggling. I would say at the most, we, in the, let's say, in like four years, we would add three. That would be it. We need the space for the machines.
What my son does, seems like space is always the issue.
Yeah, it's a big issue. I mean, 10 pounds of stuff in a notified bag. We try to keep it organized, but, but that's why we can't do any more in gross. We're done. We maxed out what we can do in 5,000.
All right, any other questions? Thank you for, for being here.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
We're going to have a public hearing for this zoning change.
Legislative hearing.
Legislative hearing, yes, sir. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this?
Vogel, architect.
Yeah, I'm actually part of the, part of the project, not a public speaker, but I didn't get up fast enough, I guess. Matt had all the interesting stuff. I just have a little boring things. Land use, as Shane mentioned, the land use plan of Area 3, West Rowan, Area 3, does recommend NB for small businesses. The ordinance also encourages expansions of existing businesses, which this is, and Matt mentioned, there's no significant additions of jobs, just machines. As he mentioned, he only wants to add three more. Any expansion beyond that would have to come back for some type of rezoning. As Shane mentioned, we originally looked at this as a conditional district, CBI/CD, because we didn't think we were going to fit within the allowable areas on the site. But when we started digging into, when Shane started digging into some of the actual uses of that barn that's there and things like that, we could net those out and we could fit perfectly into NB. So with either one, it would, you know, if we were CBI or NB, we'd have to come back with, for rezoning, that the CBI was going to have a CD on it. So that's why we think that the NB is a great, appropriate rezoning for this, let them continue to do exactly what they do and not expand onto other RA properties.
Anything for Pete?
Thanks for being on the planning board.
Bye, look, thank you, guys.
All right. Is there anyone that would like to speak with regard to this in a legislative hearing? Seeing none, we'll close that. Commissioners, is there anyone that would like to offer up a statement of reasonableness and consistency?
I would, but my voice is down.
All right, I'll read it. All right, I make a motion that we adopt a statement of reasonableness and consistency. ZO1-25 is consistent with West Rowan Area 3 land use plan, is reasonable and appropriate based on the following: request is subject to the maximum square footage allowed in the NB district. No modified statements since this generally is charged. The property use has existed at this site since 1988 and under the current ownership since 2011. The site is subject to the watershed limit of 12% built upon. Final calculations show that the operation will maintain, built upon, is that average? Built upon of 9.58% of total property acreage. Lastly, there were no complaints or concerns from any of the surrounding property owners. Make that in form of the motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then do we have a motion to approve ZO1-25?
Oh, move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Good luck to you. Go build some stuff. Make us proud. All right, Pete, go build something, will you? What are y'all doing here still? Go. All right, financial report. Anna, welcome. Good to see you. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
All right. We'll start with the cumulative expenditures through February. We're at 127 million overall, which is 10.5 million up from last February, or about 9%. which is ten point five million up from last February, or about nine percent. Um cumulative revenues, we're at one hundred and sixty-four million through February, up eleven point four million from last February, or seven point five two percent. And I'll come back and talk about that difference after we go through the other graphs. Cumulative, um, property tax collections through January is one hundred and seven million, up two point seven million from the previous January, or two point five eight percent. Then cumulative sales tax is at eighteen million, or up one point one million from the previous November. These are, of course, behind. And the next graph is the one that looks really funky, so I'm going to kind of skip it because I averaged the green line so we could kind of tell more where we're at. Um, so this is what that green line averaged together. So for the month of November, um, it was up three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars over the, like, if we average that, those two very far apart months. Um, which was like eleven percent from the previous.
Is that a turnaround then?
So, um, on this previous slide, what happened was
Well, I get that.
Yeah, so, but what happened was somebody, oh, why it's November? Like, why it's so far behind.
Few reports, we're going back.
Right, so we appear to be on track with where our budget is. So we're up one point one million for the year right now over the previous timeframe last year. So we're, I mean, I'm not going to say that all that's turned around, but we're averaging above where we were. The purple line is this year. Just slightly above.
You only have figures through November.
Through November, so December's, I think maybe came, will come in this week. Um, yeah. We should, I think we'll get December's numbers this week. So last time you had asked me about, um cumulative revenue number. Um, so the difference here from the previous year and what was making that up, so, um when we look at this property tax on this slide, it's current year, property tax only. So we have collected a little bit of previous years, so not much, but there is some gain there. So property tax is up about two point eight million from the previous year. Um, sales tax is up to one point one million. Um, our interest income is up one point one million. Then some
Up, up from what we budgeted?
No, up from what we received, up from our actuals. But this is comparing actuals to actuals. Yeah, okay. So some of these items are greater than budget, and some of them are trending on track with budget. Does that make sense? Okay. Um, but, so then in the general fund, we, um, when we did the loan for the new school, we paid ourselves back. So that's three point seven million that we paid ourselves back. Um DSS has had some additional revenues of eight hundred and seventy thousand. They look to be just different things that have come in over time. There's not one specific budget that appears to be what's causing it. It just is a cumulative total for them. Um, EMS, the ambulance billing revenue, is up like six hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, and then we recognize revenue from the sheriff's office for the grant that we got from the state. So we don't recognize those revenues until we spend the expenses. So that's five hundred and thirty-one thousand. Um, and then inspections was up about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so that's still been trending a little bit up over the previous year. So that was like ten point eight of this eleven point four. So that was the things that stood out um, in that, but the biggest is where we repaid ourselves for that loan that we took out. So there's, I don't know that there's really anything that's, you know, concerning or whatever. They're just trending. We seem to be trending right where we should be, um, according to budget.
Cliffs?
No, not that, um, I mean, other than just keeping an eye on the, the sales tax, that's still the big, big question mark every time I hear somebody talking about it on any reports.
December's always big
Should be. Yeah.
And then there'll probably, who knows what will happen in January.
Yeah. Yeah, December's usually, um, a higher month. Um, but if you, if you took this line straight across, this past November was basically where we were last year in December. I mean, it's pretty much, hopefully December's up and we're still trending upward. Which seems to be different than the rest of the state. It's a good problem to have.
All right, now, uh, I make a motion that we enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one-four-three, three-one-eight-one-one-A-one. Consider approval of the minutes of closed session held on March third, two thousand and twenty-five, as described by North Carolina General Statute one-four-three, three-one-eight-one-zero-E and one-four-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-three to preserve attorney-client privilege and Statute one-four-three, three-one-eight-A-six for personnel. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Soon as we clear the room, we'll enter into closed session. All right, no action to be taken in closed session or out of closed session. We have a motion to close, close session.
No move.
Aye.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Pierce?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Safe week.